The sixteenth and the thirty-first, which was an extraordinary meeting, of October 2018. Are you agreed that I sign these as the correct record?
Very.
Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, Mr. Taylor. Are there any apologies for absence this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received apologies from councillors Kevin Deenis, Jim Edwards, Jenny Els, John Fraser, Pat Frost, Michael Goodridge, John Gray, Stephen Hill, Mike Hodge, Peter Isherwood, Peter Martin, Stephen Mulliner, Jeanette Stennett, Stuart Stennett, Bob Upton, and Christian Hess.
Thank you. Any others that people might be aware of? Thank you very much. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interests. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-procurety or disclosive pecuniary interests to declare? Mr. Taylor?
Councilor Holder has declared a non-procurety interest in relation to the proposed PSPO for dog fowling, as he is a dog owner.
Right. Okay, well, in which case, perhaps we should take a block declaration of those who have furry friends. You can bark, wag your tail, or show hands, but if you show hands, then we have to keep it up there because Mr. Taylor will need to count. And this does not necessarily reflect what your opinion on the dog fowling policy. See what you've caused, councillor Taylor Holder. Okay, jolly good. Right, are there any further declarations of interest?
I have two cats, Madam Mayor.
Right, two cats. Do we have any other furry friends? Right, thank you very much. Moving on to mayor's announcements, there's just a housekeeping item. I had said that, mentioned to save the date of the fifteenth of February for my annual dinner, but that is clashing with too many other things, including half-term and the mayor of Farnham's evening the week before, and there's another one the week after, so I'm going to find a different date. So I'll let everyone know in due course. And of course, we have had such a wonderful September, October, and November with all of the celebrations in remembrance of those for Remembrance Day and in remembrance of the end of the centenary year of the First World War. And just, you know, I wish Jenny Els was here because the parade that was held in Elstod was outstanding. There were over 300 people there, and I'm sure that will have been echoed in villages all across the borough and towns. And also, the one in Farnham, for the first time, had over 400 participants in the parade. So that was, you know, all the Princess Wales Royal Regiment, all the cadets, the scouts. It was truly, truly impressive. But of course, for me, when I'm not biased in any way at all, the highlight was the memorial for the Canadian soldiers unveiling, which was held at Milford Common in September. And I just thought, so many of you weren't able to come because we had a really restricted space, I would just show you a few slides of the event because it was such a very special day. Now, that is the stone, those of you who haven't seen it. It's there for everyone to go and see if you'd like to see it. It was created by a sculptor named Simon Keely, and it wasn't what we had originally designed because what we had originally designed, the National Trust did not want, felt it was too big and not natural enough. So this is made out of Portland stone, and it weighs roughly two tonnes, so it's not going anywhere. It will be very difficult for anyone to, because it's been cemented in. And the maple leaf that you see there is not the usual shape that is used in the Canadian flag else you'll see in a minute, but that is, he wanted to add a bit more life to it. So that's the stone. And then these are all the dignitaries coming down to prepare for the arrival of the deputy lieutenant, who I escorted after this group had assembled. So the next slide is introducing Deputy Lieutenant Susan Lochner to the dignitaries, and that is our secretary of state, or Foreign Secretary, actually, he was Foreign Secretary at the time, and our leader, as you can see, and then Peter Martin, who's not here tonight, because I would have liked to thank him, because he funded part of the memorial. And this is Jeremy doing a speech, which was very funny. He talked about the special relationship between the two countries, but added a sufficient amount of humour to it. As you can see, the deputy lieutenant could not contain her mirth. Next one is, that was the last post, and we had, it was the Godelming Brass Band?
Yeah.
And they played beautifully, that was the last post. And as soon as they finished the last post, they had practised the Canadian National Anthem. But it wasn't just the band that practised. Take a look at this picture. The concentration is just astonishing. Peter Martin was belting it out, of course, he loves to sing, and Peter's wife is a great musician. But I was really touched that everyone was actually singing the right notes in the right order and at the right tempo, so that was added bonus. Next, that's the laying of the wreath. We can't see the Canadian major, who's hidden by me, but the four of us laid the wreath together, and it was a very, very emotional and special moment. After that, this is a group of, so we've got two representatives of the Princess Wales Royal Regiment, we've got General Martin Bowe holding the teddy, which is the mascot of the British Legion, is it? I don't know who, it's the mascot, I think, of the British Legion. And then we've got, on the right, we've got the Canadian Air Force and the Canadian padre on the left. Then we've got, and the next, that's General Tim Sullivan, shaking hands with Jeremy, and then, well, you all know who the chap is on the right, if anyone doesn't recognise him. And he told me that all officers in parade should be wearing the bowler hats, so several of them weren't. I didn't know that that was it. And then, of course, many of you came to the lunch, and this is some of the guests, so the Elmbridge, that was the Elmbridge Mayor and the Mayor of Spelthorn, and we can see again Nick Holder in between, and Mike Band in the corner, and Jim McAllister in the back. It was a really fun lunch. And then we look at the, that's the top table, we've got, in addition, well, you know everyone there except for the representative of the Canadian High Commission, Michelle Cassidy, who's the third on the right, and then that's Peter Martin's wife next to her, and Pauline Myconsort, and General Martin Bowe, and Deputy Lieutenant Peter, and the leader. And we presented the Canadians with, we each gave them a mayoral pin, and we also gave the major a salver with commemorating the date, and he was very touched with that. We also gave him a book, which was called The Aldershot Canadians in Love and War between 1939 and 1945, which has some quite interesting antics that the Canadian soldiers got up to with the good ladies of Hale and Heath and in Aldershot, but I won't elaborate on that one. And then, so this was the group shot, oh, sorry, I missed one. So we've got an RAF officer on the left, and in the middle is Gillian McFadden, who's the Chair of the Whitley Parish Council, and Sarah Nash, who's the clerk at the council. And then finally, that's the group of people involved with getting it organised. I'll come back to this in a moment, and you know everyone there except, no, you know everyone there except Major Martin Bowe, but he's Canadian, so he doesn't count. And then the final one, just to emphasise how special it was, it brought Surrey, and there's the point about the maple leaf, it's usually quite stark, there's no detail to it, but all three of us, and you can see the little confetti on the table or maple leaves as well, it was really well done. But, you know, I showed you the photo of all of the councillors who worked very hard to make this event a really, truly special event, but the unsung heroes in all of this are the officers of this council and other related parish councils, and members of the National Trust, who all pulled together under the leadership of Fay Pringle, our own Fay Pringle. It was a truly, truly special event, and I have to say to the chief executive that I think you should be extremely proud of your staff and how they've pulled this off against all odds. It was an absolutely stunning day, the weather was kind, everything was on our side, and it went very smoothly. So I would like you to join me in just applauding the staff of Waverley Borough Council and having created such a, and a memorial that will be there in perpetuity. So thank you very much. To you. So, that's it for the announcements. Item five on the agenda is questions from the members of the public. Have we received any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received one question from Jill Leslie and Linda McDermott of Cranley, that's set out on the front page of the Agenda Supplement. The question relates to the modern-day slavery charter.
Yes, right. Well, the questions and answers will be posted on the website, I understand, and just to be clear that Waverley does take very seriously the issue of modern slavery. Do we have any questions from members?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received one question from councillor David Beeman that's set out on the table paper for members.
Right, okay, the answer's been tabled, it will as well be posted on the website along with the question. I would just add to that that officers have spoken to the Post Office network and have been informed that a formal six-week consultation will be launched in the new year, and also they are arranging to meet with representatives from both the Post Office and Royal Mayor, a male. So that's item six. Item seven, motions. Have any motions been received from members?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda is minutes of the executive leader of the council to present, please.
I'm pleased to present the minutes and move the minutes of the Fourth of December Executive, and I believe I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, there are a number of items in Part One which are listed on pages two and three of the council agenda. Beginning with the first item from the minutes, which is Executive Minute 52/18, and that's the redevelopment of land adjacent to 85 Arons Hill, Godelming, and 13 Ryle Road, Farnham. Members, you'll find the report in detail at Appendix One of the Agenda Supplement on page 13. This is a fairly straightforward recommendation, and that is actually to approve funding for a total of six new affordable homes, which I think all members, cross-party, will welcome. Obviously, this is pending planning permission, but the first part of this is to actually approve the allocation of funding from the New Affordable Housing Reserve for the development of the land on the two sites. I believe there may be speakers to this item. Thank you.
I think we do have speakers. Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, very couple of, a very short couple of questions. First off, I just was curious as to why this comes before the planning permission, that's just a general question. And secondly, under Part Two, it mentions that start-home regulations guidelines need to be issued before these can really happen. Is this something that's mandatory before this can happen, or is that an advisory? Thank you.
Do you want to reply to that now or later?
I can reply to that straight away. First of all, before we can start any form of works, we need to actually know that we have the money available. Councillor Follows, I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, through you, if councillor King might want to go into a little more detail, though.
Councillor King, yes, are you happy to do so, councillor King?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm more than happy to do so. Yes, these houses are not being built as starter homes. The starter home legislation that was originally proposed by the government has subsequently withered on the vine, and they've had, this is why these two properties were originally going to be on the start-home agenda, that no longer exists, so they are going forward as normal social affordable housing. Thank you.
And the question on advisory on Part Two?
Sorry, that's, I withdraw that then because it's irrelevant, clearly. Thank you, content with that.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Beeman, sorry, I had councillor Beeman first.
So, yes, just what councillor, a little bit of clarification on what councillor Cameron King has just said, that these are going forward as affordable rented, because somehow from the papers prior to the exec meeting, must admit I haven't read them since, I got the impression that they might be help-to-buy ones. Can you just confirm that they won't be there, because I know help-to-buy has been slated recently, hasn't it? And if this is, I was going to comment upon that, but if they are going to be affordable rented, definitely, then absolutely supportive. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Beeman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I don't want to prolong this debate very much, because it's just a follow-on from what councillor Follows said about having the approval for the expenditure before granting a planning permission, in particular in relation to the one in Farnham at Ryle Road, which is not in my ward, I hate to add, but I am aware of a number of objections which have put in the direction of the ward councillors, and what is that, planning permission was refused and yet with approved expenditure? Seems rather hot before the oars to me, but there we are.
Okay. Any other speakers? Leader, would you like to sum up?
I think councillor Beeman was asking about the approval of the money, sorry, in relation to planning permission. So obviously, we have to apply for the money and the funding, make sure we've got that in place before we can then go ahead with planning permission. However, should planning permission not be granted, and we need to remember that the council are the ones applying for planning permission, so if planning permission isn't granted, the council cannot appeal that decision, then obviously, there will be a mechanism in place for the money to go back. In terms of your other question, councillor Beeman, if I may, can I give you a written response to that, so you've got some more detail and clarity when I've had the opportunity to confer with the portfolio holder again? Thank you.
And leader, the question raised by councillor Hyman on rent help-to-buy.
I'm so sorry, Madam Mayor, yes, that's the one where I'll need to come back and get some further clarity for him.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. So have you finished summing up, leader?
That concludes that particular item, and I put the recommendation to council. Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommendation is to approve the allocation of funding from the New Affordable Housing Reserve for the development of land adjacent to 85 Arons Hill, Godelming, and 13 Ryle Road, Farnham. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Leader?
Madam Mayor, thank you. The next item on the agenda relates to property that is partly in the ownership of the housing revenue account at present. It was thought that it would be partially used for housing, but there is now not that need, so this is more a straightforward matter of some tidying up between our two funds. Because it relates to the housing revenue account and the general fund, and is a transfer, it means that what we do have to do is bring the item to council, if you like, as a piece of housekeeping, hence the reason, that's before you with the three recommendations, which are to transfer the part within the housing revenue account to the general fund, so it all is encompassed by one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have, I believe we have some speakers. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The leader has outlined the situation that initiated the transfer, and I have to say, thank goodness, I haven't had to explain that. And as the Waverley councillor representative on the board of trustees of Rowley Centre for the Community, I would like to take this opportunity, if I may, to thank the Waverley councillors and the officers for their wonderful support and encouragement. Rowley Centre for the Community is very important to the residents of Cranley and the surrounding Cranford area, and in particular, to the elderly and more vulnerable residents. Over the last few years, Rowley's has faced some very challenging and difficult times, but with Waverley's support, the charity can now move forward with improved confidence in its future. The trustees, of which I am part of the board, are investigating the new opportunities to improve services and to increase fundraising, and the users of Rowley's are very much enjoying the significantly enlarged and beautifully enhanced facilities, and are extremely grateful to Waverley for its continuing support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ellis. Are there any other speakers? Not, leader, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, I think there's very little else to say, and that concludes that item. And I put the recommendations to council. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. There are three recommendations set out on page two of the Agenda Supplement. Are those agreed? Thank you. Leader?
Madam Mayor, thank you. The next item before you tonight is the introduction of the Community Infrastructure Levy governance arrangements, and, members, you can find those in Appendix Three of the Agenda Supplement on page 25. Before we start or debate this item, can I just draw members' attention to page 29 of the supplemental papers? The Value for Money Overview and Scrutiny Committee proposed revised recommendations four and five, which is set out at paragraph 31. It was my intention to agree these revised recommendations last week at the executive meeting, but I have to apologise, this was overlooked, so I'd like to move an amendment to replace recommendations four and five as set out at the top of page 30 with the revised versions. There is no change to recommendations one, two, and three. And I believe I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, do we have any speakers on this proposed amendment to the recommendations? Councillor Beeman?
Aye. Just a very brief comment, Madam Mayor, is that in relation to SIL, I think it's very important that the advisory board is strong and robust, because there could be many claims of trying to get exemption from SIL payments, and we've seen this in sort of affordable housing in some cases, and I would just like to stress that I think it's important that the SIL, the advisory board takes a very robust attitude in ensuring that full SIL payments are attributable to the council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will try and make this brief. I do have some questions on this that have been bothering me a little bit. Broadly, I think the proposals are fairly reasonable, and I would just like, could leader confirm the scrutiny regime and periodicity that the SIL advisory board and its governance model is going to be subject to, just so I'm clear on that one. Secondly, could you confirm that the proposed annual report to members that's going to detail the spending and receipts for SIL, which is outlined on section 23 of the appendix, will include a fully itemised list identifying specific developments that generated the SIL, and what exactly that money was spent on, so that we can see quite clearly the connection between the two? The final concern I have is also relating to what councillor Beeman referred to, and it's something I discussed at last full council.
Sorry, 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 councillor Follows.
Sorry, apologies.
Yeah, I don't think you're talking to the amendment.
Talking to the amendment, my apologies.
Yeah.
Yes, I will sit for a moment then.
Anyone else on the amendment? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just hoping, actually, someone would explain the amendment to us, because I'm just trying to work out why we're debating it. Would somebody like just to explain simply to people why this amendment, what the amendment exactly is? Is it the black text there that's been put in? Is that all we're agreeing to?
Leader?
Page 29, two-thirds of the way down, where it's emboldened.
Yes, that's right.
We're agreeing just to the emboldening, aren't we?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Leader?
Madam Mayor, in relation to these two amendments of the recommendations, as I say, these were recommended by the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, so I would like to recommend them to council, as clearly they're part, and the scrutiny committee having given this some very, very robust scrutiny wanted, and were clear that they really did want to see these amendments made, so I'd like to ask for support from all councillors for those. Thank you.
Makes sense. Right, so councillors, can I ask, is the amendment to revise the wording of recommendations four and five agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. So then I will invite speakers on the recommendations as amended. I already have some speakers, the first of which is councillor Story.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You caught me unprepared then.
Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon. Would you like some time to think?
No, no, that's all. The SIL that we are hoping and will collect is designed to ameliorate the impact of development within the borough, and we know that it has already been adopted and comes into force on March the first. It's expected that over the course of the local plan period, we will raise something like 94 million pounds for infrastructure projects. And obviously, that amount of money requires, to use councillor Beeman's words, a robust system for governance. Extensive research has been undertaken with other authorities who are already using the SIL system to find out what works well and what doesn't work, so that the suggestions that have been put forward here are as optimum as they can be subject to actual practice. And the report recommends that after one or two years, we'll look back to see what the progress is. We won't have money coming in on March the first, it'll be some time before we get that money, so we have time to put in the scheme and to make sure that it's up and running as we need it to be. Any spending will be required to meet the SIL regulations and be in line with our infrastructure development plan, and so it should be reasonably straightforward. The board will make recommendations to the executive, and subject to the amendment that's up there, then they will have delegated authority up to some value, and council will make decisions beyond that. The SIL spending, in answer to something that councillor Follows will probably say in a minute, will be fully transparent. The, there is an intention to have online access to all of the information relating to what SIL is coming from, what schemes, and what it's being spent on, and so that should work happily. SIL and all planning matters are not party political, and it was not intended in this document that the usual allocation of places on party basis should be followed exactly. However, that is not yet fixed. There has been no suggestion yet as to how the members of the board should be brought forward, so that can be on a political basis, it can be as the ONS suggested, on a regional basis, maybe on any other kind of choice. So I recommend the five recommendations to the council, and I hope that they will get your support.
Thank you, councillor Story. Councillor Beeman? I had you down to speak? Did you want to speak? No, okay. Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My apologies for speaking in the wrong place. So my first two questions as recorded, do I need to repeat those, or are you happy to take those, as previously stated? Councillor Story did address that a little bit, and if they are going to be online and fully transparent, I assume that will be subject to the regular scrutiny regime, to the Value For Money Group. So I take that assurance as it is. The final one I have is, it's all good, well and good at being transparent, but it is really a case of whether there is anything to be transparent about. I'm still concerned that we will not actually be taking in a huge amount of money for SIL. I mean, we have seen in the last few months an absolute flurry of applications coming through to the JPC, which will mean that nearly every application of any note is avoiding SIL. Certainly in my own ward for Oxford Park, that will likely avoid it, and there are several others around it that are likely to avoid it. And my concern is actually, £94 million does seem to be an extraordinary stretch, and I don't think we're going to get anything close to that money coming through, particularly as nearly everything of note under LPP1 is likely to be delivered, is likely to be through before any of this even counts. I'm not entirely sure why it took so long for SIL to come through after Local Plan Part One, it was asking for this to happen. So my question is, will the leader commit to full and clear reporting to the relevant scrutiny committee of all developments that should have been or initially subject to SIL but subsequently had that figure reduced or eliminated, with a line explaining why that is? Because my concern is that developers will use viability assessments and other strategies to avoid paying SIL and potentially avoid building affordable homes as the alternative. So if I could have some assurances that everything possible will be done to actually ensure that developers actually pay the SIL, and that there is some mechanism to actually track it and record it, and to tell this chamber why they haven't, if that's the case, in the clear and transparent way that councillor Story has outlined, I would like those assurances. Thank you.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Mayor. Yes, the council's proposal to set up an advisory board for this management process is, I believe, sensible and timely. The proposed board of three executive members and four non-executive councillors with oversight by the executive, supported by a full-time SIL officer, will recommend the projects to be supported on an annual basis. Yes, we already know that the strategic SIL 1, 2, 3 list forms the background, but remember, this is a live document, so additional projects that are notified from other developments coming forward will obviously be added to that 1, 2, 3 list. It's interesting to see that SIL should be used for the provision, improvement, replacement, operation, or maintenance of infrastructure, but not to resolve historical deficits. Well, I'm sure that one will be a bit of a conundrum and very interesting consideration by our law officers when they come forward. The rules for this allocation are clearly stated in the council papers this evening. As said, furthermore, the allocation will be published and publicly available, so expect some comments from your constituents when those items appear on the website. Apart from the allocations, the board will be responsible for monitoring the expenditure, both of SIL and S106 agreements. Waverley Finance will maintain the books and the process, but the board will confirm that the council is obtaining value for money and quality delivery. Likewise, the Waverley SIL officer will provide support and project monitoring function to towns and parishes in respect of their local SIL projects, which are also under the same financial and project regime. Both Waverley and individual towns and parishes are required to publish annual accounts in respect of the SIL projects. Thank you. So that's full detail, councillor Follows.
Councillor Ramsdale.
Minor point of order for all councillors in the chamber is follows with an O, please. Thank you.
Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A small group of us in the environmental ONS Task and Finish Group did look at this issue. I suspect it overlaps a little, but apologies for that, but never mind. As my colleague said, there's a significant amount of money here. I can't see any reason why all councillors won't be keen to see that maximized. I think it's in the region of eight to nine million pounds per year. Clearly, what's established needs to be robust and fairness between the different activities that are funded from SIL and different locations. But as a group, what we found ourselves is in complete agreement with the proposals as, at the time of our meeting, were drafted, and I don't see any reason why they would change, and they certainly don't change my view going forward. So this proposal has my full support. It's a really good beneficial source of money, and I'm really pleased to see that the council was actually further ahead in structuring how we're going to handle it than I had envisaged previously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you very much. Councillor Adams actually did answer a number of the questions. I'm very thankful to Value For Money ONS for the work that they did, because it answered what they've put in there, as certainly, I think, covered a lot of the concerns that most members might have before this came to the executive. Couple of remaining concerns, or questions, is the strategic SIL fund account going to be invested? Perhaps this is something for the board to look at. I suppose I should just ask, really, we are only looking at a recommendation that pretty much says we are going to establish a board, and then the board's going to decide things, and it's going to come back to us again, which is not what was going to happen in the first place, but it is going to come back to us again. So I don't think any of us should have any concerns about agreeing this tonight. But the original paper to the exec did say that we'd have a review after one to two years, but it also said that we weren't actually going to be getting any money in for a couple of years. So I'm wondering whether perhaps, have we got a backstop for the review? We all love backstops, don't we?
We don't want any backstops.
Shall we talk about backstops? Would there be a backstop for that review? And I'm not particularly concerned, Madam Mayor, because if this is coming back to us probably before March, I would assume before March, then we don't really need to consider any of the details at the moment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Right, leader, would you like to sum up? Oh, I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Beeman, I'm sorry, sorry, councillor Beeman, I forgot you, but you go ahead, councillor.
I just have two very quick points to address something that councillor Follows said. The viability is now subject to national policy guidance, so there'll be no fudging or argument regarding the SIL figures, and there are plenty more developments still to come within the plan period, so not to think that all SIL has been avoided by section 106.
Thank you.
May I come back to that briefly?
No. Councillor Beeman?
Yeah, just a point of information, really. I mean, one thing that, for those of us living on the borders of Waverley, of course, there's nothing to stop us actually putting bids for SIL money in, for example, East Hampshire, should that lead to traffic problems in our area. So I hope we'll bear that in mind as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, before I ask the leader to sum up? Leader?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I think we've covered a number of the questions. I'd just go back. If I have missed anything, then please, can I ask members to ask me again later, and I'll make sure that I've captured any outstanding answers? To the questions about review, it will be an ongoing review, councillor Hyman. To a certain extent, the money, we know, won't all come in right from March 1st, but I'm sure that it will come in in different stages. We don't know exactly, so we are going to have to be flexible. And I think all members would want us to be flexible in terms of making sure we are doing that review, and it may be that the board decide that we have to do more reviews to start with. I honestly don't know. We are going to have to work with this, because it is going to be work in progress. But the most important thing is, we have a governance structure, that we now have a robust SIL framework to work with. That's what our residents want. For the number of residents who speak to me, accept that there has to be development, they accept we need new homes. What they want to see is really robust infrastructure coming forward as well, and that's something that we now have to work even harder on as we go forward. We have a dedicated SIL officer who will help with that. We do have a number of sites still to come forward, and it's for us to really work hard and make sure that we absolutely maximize that ongoing. I will be talking to the members of the opposition over the next few weeks in terms of the composition of the board, and clearly, I'm sure that everyone has a view, and theirs will be welcomed as well. So that it is cross-borough and cross-party, because that's exactly what it needs to be, and that's what our residents need to see as well. Hopefully, that helps to sum up some of the questions that were asked, but if I have missed anything, please do come back to me. Thank you. And I commend the recommendations with the two revised to council. Thank you.
Right, councillors, there are five recommendations to council, recommendations one, two, three, as set out on page two of the To Follow book, and the revised recommendations four and five that are on the screens in front of you. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader, next item.
Madam Mayor, thank you. The next item is the Public Space Protection Order, and that's the Public Space Protection Order in relation to dog fowling and the response to the public consultation. That item has been out under public consultation, Madam Mayor, for a long period of time and has received over 1,600 responses. I think everyone would agree with me that there are a large number of dog owners within the borough who are very responsible. Sadly, there are some who are not so responsible, and we need to remember that the impact of this can be quite horrific. For example, things like toxoplasmosis in young children, and we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to address this, something that our residents have fed back, they want us to address. It's something that unfortunately, we have seen, as I say, from some irresponsible dog owners, becoming a real issue, and therefore, that item this evening, with the proposed way of dealing with this, is coming before you with one recommendation. I believe there are a number of members who wish to speak to this item, Madam Mayor, and I commend the recommendation to council.
Okay. Well, the first one I have is councillor Holder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Although supported by 76% of the consultees for the Public Space Protection Order, dog fowling, are not entirely convinced that this is the only way of proceeding. In addition to the threat of a fine, I believed a more conciliatory approach might produce better results. The enforcement of the dog fowling order would be very difficult to do. Do you place wardens behind every tree in the hope of catching an offending dog? And on top of that, most dog walkers do their walking between seven and nine in the morning before the wardens start their day's work. Yourford Borough Council produced a notice on bright pink paper written in large blue lettering with a jingle and a cartoon at the start of all footpaths. I can't remember the exact wording, but I do remember that poo rhymes with shoe. And the idea being is that you have something that catches people's eye, they read it, they understand it, and they obey it. Some London boroughs ask dog walkers to pick a twig and remove the offending article from the path so that other people don't step in it. This also appears to work quite well, and I don't think it's necessary to impose a fine, which is unenforceable. I would suggest a notice is put up on all parks to this effect. Please do not leave your dog's feces on the path for others to step on. Please pitch it into the undergrowth with the use of a twig. So remember, if you can't pick it, then stick it and flick it. Thank you.
Have you finished, councillor Holder? Right, councillor Follows.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councillor Holder. Literally, my similar question, I don't believe we should be passing bylaws which we can't enforce, and so I am just curious to the leader, how do we enforce this, and what capacity do we have to enforce it? Thank you.
Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you very much. I just want to agree with both previous speakers. Unfortunately, in Godwin Town Council, we've in the past six months had incidents of violence on Godwin community buildings, and it's taken the police in this building about an hour to get 200 yards up the road to deal with it. So I'm afraid I don't see that there'll be higher lurking in the undergrowth, trying to get dog owners to look after their dog's mess. There are things we could be doing. I know overseas and probably in other towns, they do provide free dog bins and dog bags as well. I think we could do a little bit more of that. I'm not sure about councillor Holder's poem, I'll happily give it a try, but I think sadly there are some people who simply won't look after their dogs or clean up after their dogs, and they probably can't be enforced, but there is probably a lighter way of doing this, and I agree with councillor Follows, that trying to put down something which literally we can't enforce is probably not a very sensible way forward. Thanks.
Any other views? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Leader, I skipped over you. I beg your pardon, you were the first to. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whilst I hear the views of councillor Holder and councillor Follows, and I do broadly agree with them, I'm not going to drag on too long talking about dog poo two weeks before Christmas. However, I do welcome this proposed public space order, and the reason is, in my ward, I have the Bournemouth, which are notorious for dog fowling. Six years ago, seven years ago, we started a campaign in the Bournemouth and around the Bourne, and actually, the campaign started in the Herald. I don't have a dog, incidentally, so I'm sure you're going to shout at me saying, yeah, you really do care. What I do do is ride a bike in the woods, and actually, spending half an hour on the bike and 20 minutes cleaning the wheels afterwards is rather tedious and very irksome. So we did start the campaign, we got a great response, and what we did also do was, as councillor Holder pointed out, we had a campaign from the local community to put stickers on lampposts. It wasn't quite pick it, stick it, and flick it, but it was very similar, and it worked. What people were doing was spraying it as well, made it obvious that it was there. But what we did, and went further to achieve, was to talk to environment and get more bins put in place at the entrances and the exits of the Bournemouth in particular, and I think Alice Holt now have done the same. The problem with that has been that the bins have been filled up pretty quickly with bags of dog poo, and then the trees nearby to these bins has been decorated by hanging bags of present, which is not so good. So where do we go from here? I think if we do this policy, we do need to target the bad areas, and I think we can do that, and I think we could almost go one stage further than that and announce that's what we're going to do to play fair. But with research five or six years ago as to where we could end up going if we wanted to do such a thing, the Americans have got a good idea, and it's working. And what they're doing in Texas is they are registering dogs. Now, you might say that actually, people who have dogs that are repeated fowlers are not going to be remotely interested in registering their animal, but they would be if they're incentivized to do so. And I think what they've done over there is they've offered them $15 to register the animal, and then charge them $60 when it offends to claim some of that money back. But what it's done is it's created a DNA database for these animals in bad areas, incentivizing people to register, and actually, in return, they're getting a return in revenue for that, and it's actually paying for the policy. Now, is that something we want to go down the road off? I don't know, but it's an idea, but I do think we are remiss if we don't actually deal with the issue and deal with it robustly and be seen in public to be doing just that. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since you seem to be on this sort of note of what the signs should say, and I hear what councillor Holder had to say, surely what we should be saying to make sure we've got true deterrents is, if you don't bag it, pick it, stick it, or flick it, you'll pay for it.
Any other opinions? Right. Would you like to combine all those comments in a biodegradable bag, leader?
I take on board the comments that have been made by a number of members, but the fact of the matter is, as I said at the start... fact of the matter is, as I said at the start, we're introducing these measures because we have an issue in certain parts of the borough. And whilst I see that some people have a humorous side to it, it isn't funny if you pick up an infection, it's not funny if you step in it, and we've got to try and do something because we do have unfortunately an issue. So we need to start somewhere. The plan is that we'll identify a number of the sort of the worst affected areas. Yes, what we will also be doing is we will be advertising this and make sure that there is a time for the new bylaw, as it were, to bed in so people become used to it. We will also be issuing a detailed comm strategy to accompany it so that we actually communicate this very clearly borough-wide to people. There will be fixed penalty notices that can be issued as a result of us having this bylaw in place, and they can be issued by enforcement officers. To the point made by councillor Follows and some of the other councillors, I'm aware that people walk their dogs, they don't walk necessarily between nine and five. And in answer to your question, which is a perfectly legitimate one, yes, we can make sure that we have officers out enforcing in the areas that are affected and are worst affected at the right hours, if you like. So it may be that we have to have officers out at six in the morning to enforce, it may be that we need people out at eight o'clock at night, but we can do that, we have that capacity, we have that flexibility. And we will also be training a range of our officers from the housing team and other teams within the council who will also be able to enforce and issue enforcement notices. So I hope that helps to clarify some of the points that have been raised this evening. But as I say, it is an issue in the borough, not for responsible dog owners, but for unfortunately the minority of irresponsible dog owners, and this is the plan for us to move forward. And I commend the recommendation to council, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so council, you're invited to approve the Public Space Protection Order, number one, dog fowling. Is anyone wish to oppose this, or is it agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Leader, final item.
Madam Mayor, thank you. The final item before council this evening for consideration in this section of the minutes is the fee structure for services provided by the council under the Animal Welfare Legislation and Licensing Activities involving Animals England Regulations for 2018. I believe we have a speaker to this item, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Bolton, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I trust this will be somewhat easier to deal with. The Animal Welfare Act 2006 was introduced to ensure that animals are not mistreated, and these regulations came into effect on the first of October. They replace a number of previous licensing regimes in relation to animal establishments, and these are set out in the report. There is a new fee structure to replace all existing fees and charges for animal licenses. The new fee structure is designed to recover the costs of administration, inspection, and regulation of the new regime. Officers have worked with colleagues in other Surrey authorities to ensure consistency over the level of fees. The new fee structure is set out in Annex One to the report, and I recommend it to the council. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers? Leader, would you like to sum up?
Madam Mayor, no, I think councillor Bolton has summed up very well. There's one recommendation that I'd like to ask council to support. Thank you.
Thank you. The council is invited to approve the fee schedule for animal licensing activities. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Statements on Part Two items, I have no one listed to speak on Part Two items, so Leader, is there anything else?
Madam Mayor, thank you. No, that concludes the minutes of the executive of the Fourth of December. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much, Leader. Well, we move on now to item nine, which is minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee. Councillor Simon Inchbald to present, please.
I am pleased to present the meeting, minutes of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee meeting on the eleventh, held on the eighteenth, on the twelfth of November, sorry, and I believe I have a second.
Happy to second, Madam Mayor.
There is just one item in Part One, which is a review of the council's statement of gambling policy. There were very minor changes to it. Some members of the committee, myself included, have reached an age where we have the attention span of a fruit fly, so we couldn't really make sense of acronyms, so we couldn't remember what they meant, so we got rid of those. Other than that, it's pretty much the way it was before, and I commend it to council.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this item? If not, councillor Inchbald, would you like to sum up? Or should I go straight to the recommendation?
There's nothing to sum up.
The recommendation is to approve the revised statement of gambling policy. Is that agreed? Thank you.
I have no speakers in Part Two, Madam Mayor, so you'll be relieved to hear. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, councillor Inchbald. We move on now to item ten, which is minutes of the Audit Committee. Councillor Richard Seaborn, Vice Chairman of the Audit Committee, will present. Thank you.
I'm pleased to present the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting of the fifth of November, and I believe I have a second.
Pleased to second, Madam Mayor.
There are no Part One items in these minutes. Part Two predominantly covers routine business. I would draw colleagues' attention to agenda item seven in the minutes. This sets out that the officers have been asked to review and update the Audit Committee's terms of references, particularly looking at potential overlaps with other committees. Beyond that, I'm not aware of any questions having been submitted, so that concludes my review of these minutes. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Elser Seaborn. We now move on to item eleven, which is the Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report 2017-18. Councillor John Ward is going to present this on behalf of the Overview and Scrutiny Coordinating Board. Councillor Ward.
Are you content if I do it from home, Madam Mayor?
I'm happy for you to do it from there, yes.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm happy to present, this is our first annual report. As you all know, it's a new system, and we had some interesting times actually designing the report. It's, I think, quite difficult to make council reports interesting, so we're rather concentrated on making it readable, so I hope most of you have been able to at least flick through a few pages. Previously on this council, we've had two and three and four overview scrutiny committees at various times during my existence here, and although I'm not generally keen on multiplicity, I think actually breaking it down to the fore has actually been a very positive step. It's focused minds much more, and it's got people interested in the various groups on the various committees. One of the main successes has been the working groups, where we've done typically, we've done a report on waste and recycling, health inequalities, we've looked at the establishment of the property company, and we've looked at housing design for the future Waverley I've sat in on all of the committees at least once, and they all seem to me to be functioning extremely well, and I hope and believe they've been helpful to the executive. Certainly, the enthusiasm has been pretty apparent throughout, and it was interesting that even today, we've had an example of an overview and scrutiny committee actually being of use in that recommendations were changed at council. One of the things that perhaps has, we also have quite a lot at the end of pie charts and questions comparing what was thought of at these committees some time ago to what seems to be thought about them now. And although regrettably, we didn't have quite so many answers as we'd hoped, you'll notice in all those pie charts, the red sections, which are the things that catch my eye, have got a lot smaller in the current view of it than they were earlier. So I think we are achieving a certain amount of success, and I hope that is so. Personally, I used not to be a great fan of overview and scrutiny. Ten years ago, I asked to be removed from overview and scrutiny, and I haven't sat on another one until last year, when we changed the style, and I have to say, I had a bit of an epiphany because now I am actually an enthusiastic supporter of them. And to think back to the opening words of this evening's lesson, from darkness has come a great light, and I'm extremely pleased and happy to present this report for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think it must have been about four or five years ago that councillor Pat Frost decided our scrutiny needed scrutinizing, and as a result, we ended up with the four committees. And I personally think that they've improved things enormously by having fewer members, that we are all far more engaged, and indeed, with certainly our own working group for the community and wellbeing, the inequalities report has been so well-respected that local other local councils and indeed, health authorities are actually taking our findings on board. So I would like to think that we are doing, well, pretty well nowadays. Maybe we could try harder, but we're certainly working hard. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Band.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I too support the work done by the revised ONS committees, and I think they've worked extremely well, as councillor Ward and councillor have just said. I think one of the key issues he weighs has happened is the enthusiasm which both members and officers have got together, and I think a great tribute, I think, to the officers' support which has been given to these committees, because without their very close engagement, we wouldn't be making the progress which we have made. And out of those officers, I think there has been one superstar. I mean, she has been making, certainly was the support officer for the Value for Money and Customer Service ONS committee, and she really has done a fantastic job. I mean, she has really taken maybe a rambling set of points coming out of extensive discussions and turned them into a comprehensive, readable, and informative report, and that is a job extremely well done, and I think we need a great, owe her a great gratitude to the work she's done. There's ongoing work, of course, it's not finished, and the Value for Money ONS committee has got a scrutiny work going on through looking at details of the medium-term financial strategy, and I support the work they're doing. We also took a long time to have a look at service plans. Now, I think in the past, ONS committees have rather passed over service plans, they come at the end of a long meeting reviewing the budget, and they're rather been taken for granted, and I think they are a very important feature of the work that is done. And to do that, the ONS committee actually spent an extra meeting and spent over two hours looking at the service plans, and I'm still not sure we've actually done them justice because they are a very important contribution to the budget-setting process, and I think we need to pay increasing attention to them. The Audit Committee has already indicated that looking, asking the officers to look at the potential overlap between the remit of the ONS committees and the Audit Committee. And as far as Value for Money is concerned, on the working groups, we've overcome that to some extent by actually inviting Audit Committee members to participate in the working group when we're considering topics. And I think this joint working is certainly a way of making sure that both the policy and the process issues are addressed in one working group, and I would commend that sort of practice to others. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Band. Would anyone else like to speak? If not, then I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you councillor Ward and all members of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for the contribution you've made over the past year and the work, all the hard work that you've put in to make our scrutiny function improved and robust. I now would need to ask all council if you're content to formally receive the Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item twelve, exclusion of press and public, there are no exempt items to consider, so I will shortly invite you to Christmas drinks and nibbles in the chamber. I must warn you that there is a raffle for the Army Benevolent Fund, the soldiers' charity, and if those of you who weren't able to come to the Mayor's Fair, that would be a good opportunity to redeem yourselves. No, I'm only joking. And also, just to wish you all a very, very happy Christmas, and may be a safe one for you and your loved ones. Now declare the meeting over.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.